This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Tonight is April 1st. I hope nobody did anything fun with you guys this today at work or what have you, but we're at our 5:00 meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Let's call roll to order if we would. Sam?
Mr. Johnson is here.
Mr. Johnline?
Here.
Mr. Maloney?
Here.
And Mr. Simpson, both of you happy today?
All right. We'll stand for the plug and leave you please. I'd like to lead this to the plan of the United States of America. To the great majority of the people who wish to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Were there any questions on the amendments that were sent out last week? Okay. I'll make an offer motion to approve the minutes from March 18th.
Second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Carry none? All right. How about the public, hearing of the public? Oh, thanks for coming. We're going to get through our meeting and then we'll have you come up at the end because it's not on the agenda, so, but thanks for coming. Erica, you've got, come on up. You've got a brief presentation this evening, huh?
How are you guys doing?
Great.
Very good. I didn't do anything super fancy. I just wanted to take the opportunity to give you an update of what parks have been up through the last year and what we have here this year. Just some background on myself. I've been here at the park for, maybe this will be my 10th year. And I've been at the park for 25 years, which is a perfect segue into the fact that Fossil Park will be celebrating its 25th birthday this year. So July 18th, please make a mark in your calendars and getting an invite to our birthday party that we're planning. In July, very excited. The fossil park, the fossil pit will open on 15th of April. And we just got brand new climbing equipment out at Fossil Park. So all of the pieces of that park kind of done based on the master plan we put together for that in 2019. We're very excited probably doing ribbon cutting in the next month or so. So super excited about Fossil Park developments. Silicon Prairie Park, our biggest property, we did a master plan last year. And so included in that master plan is, it's very, you know, conservation heavy. A lot of folks, when we did our surveys and the public input meetings, really liked the nature part of that park out there. So we will be doing some trail repair. We will be putting an parking lot on Silvania Avenue. That'll probably happen this fall. And then there's bathrooms at the south end, again, attached to that sort of southern Silvania Avenue mansion. Accessories are going forward. We have some other projects that we'll be looking at there the next five to 10 years. Oldlander Park, doing amazing things as always. Starting to get really busy. People are walking past my window more and more every day as the weather gets warmer. We have a lot of programs happening there this spring, so our annual trout parade is coming up on the 26th. We've got the market, we're calling it the summer market, is starting in mid-May. That'll go through September. And then our content series, of course, is in the summer, June through, through the end of August. So lots of awesome programs going on. I think, oh, we get to host Maple and May at Oldlander Park this year.
Oh.
So they needed a space to do it since downtown Silvania is going to be under construction. So since the market has worked so well at Oldlander, it's a good template to kind of have Maple and May's similar setup. So we're excited to be hosting that this year. Let's see. The big thing that we have going on is we've been saving all of our money for extending university parks by a trail. So if you have used the trail at all, you know that it stops at Silicon Road right now. And we are working with the Metro Parks and Lucas County to extend that trail all the way up to Silicon Prairie Park. It's a three-phase project. Samantha has a kind of a summary for you so that you have the information. The first phase is Silicon to Centennial Road. And that portion, the county and Metro Parks, we know are taken care of. They got a National Works grant to fund the majority of that project. We have taken on a section from Centennial to Silicon Prairie Park. That section's going to be about a $3 to $4 billion project. We were able to get a CMAC grant, which is a federal grant that helps with carbon mitigation and alternative transportation. And so that money, we have $1.7 million there, and our budget's, you know, $1.7 million. So we're saving a lot of money for that project. We're looking at a 2027 completion of that. And well, we hope, we hope it's a big project. One of the really exciting things that has happened in the last couple of weeks is we have to get across Ten Mile Creek. And we anticipated being able to use the bridge at Centennial Road. The Lucas County engineers decided that it's too narrow and too fast for us to put a bike lane. So we have to, we have to build a separate pedestrian bridge. So we've been working with Metro Parks to find funding for that project for the last year. And I was able to have a conversation with Oliver Turner, your administrator, a couple of months ago about that project. And he in turn was able to talk to Representative Josh Williams about that project. And I was able to talk to Josh about putting that on the budget. So Williams, August, and I have been working on an amendment to the current state budget. I asked for an update this week. We'll see what, what's going on. So that's pretty exciting. We asked for a million dollars from the budget. That will come out of the Department of Natural Resources. And that will cover the construction of that bridge. That was an unexpected expense. Neither Metro Parks nor ourselves had anticipated that expense. It is a big chunk of money for that project to be completed. We don't put the bridge in. There's very little point in us, you know, building our portion of the trail. So it's, it's pretty essential to that project. So we're looking forward to see what happens. If, if, if it doesn't come through, the budget will look for alternative funding. But that was, that was a really important process. And again, I want to thank Oliver for putting that connection together for us. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. That's, that's really all I have for you guys. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Sounds like you'll be busy.
We are. We're very busy. Lots of exciting things going on. Can't wait to release the bathroom at Oldlander Park. Those things have been there since the thing opened.
Have you ever seen it? Has anybody ever found a trilobite at the corner?
So every year, an eight-year-old girl finds an amazing trilobite. Always an eight-year-old and it's always a girl.
That's so cool. Yeah, it was a hard find.
Last year it was seven. She found a chunk, oh, we only found a chunk of a rock with like seven full trilobites.
Wow. Very cool.
Yeah, so just finding eight-year-old girl a tape.
We appreciate you coming over here and giving us something.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you guys again. You know, even though we're not physically connected as a community, we work really hard together to make sure we're providing the best to our constituents and our residents. So thank you for the work that you do and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Erica. Alrighty. Rob, you want to, you've got a few things tonight you'd like to chat about?
Evening.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Capel. First item, the resolution 25054. This is to approve the plan and advertise for bid for the 2025 Township Resurfacing Project. This is the third project for construction this year. Basically Township subdivision Rose, and the estimated cost is $897,000. Plans are in the room for review.
Any questions by the board? I'll offer resolution 25054 to approve a plan advertised bid for the 2025 Township Resurfacing Project. Excuse me.
Hey, Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, resolution 25055. Excited to ask you for authorization to offer judicial employment. As a fleet mechanic supervisor to Darren Osman, he's a current mechanic in the service department. Darren has been a great asset to Township since he came on board. He has not made it through his current probationary period. He did apply for the position, was interviewed. And we feel he's a great fit. I think the fire department, police department will speak on his behalf as a, as a good person. And we'll make a good supervisor back there.
Questions? I'll offer resolution 25055 to employment to Darren Osman.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. I probably have them in the next board meeting if you should do them. So this makes this resolution good. Next one is resolution 25059. This is authorization to advertise or hire four mechanics. We should promote promotion. Darren Osman will have a big hit to the mechanic position.
Any questions by the board? I'll offer resolution 25059 to advertise for a mechanic.
Second.
Call roll. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Jeff, come on down.
Evening.
Evening. Hope for the board as well. I guess it's a good opportunity to let you guys know that the fire department is very happy with Rob's service department and Darren's work as well.
That's great to hear.
Appreciate your approval and promotion. I have two resolutions for you tonight. First one's 25-061. This is to approve changes to fire department hiring policy. If you're saying yourself didn't need to do this recently, you did. These are some additional changes that we found that could help us in finding candidates sooner and offering them a continued employment before someone else has the opportunity to do so. Some of the highlighted changes, in case you reviewed this before today, because there were a couple of last minute changes. Section 7 and 8 had a little bit of a change due to our legal advisors. It had to do with when we do the background check. Where it currently was, was okay by them, but it's just a cleaner move to move it to section 8 and follow up by the revised code a little better. So we go ahead and made that change. And then at the very end of this document of the resolution, we added a pre-employment agreement along with a reimbursement agreement that the police currently use. And because of that, we had to make a couple of changes in the employment agreement because of the reimbursement. Have you answered any other question? Do you have any?
I had one question on the lateral transfer.
Okay.
We're taking that from one year to three years. So they could have stopped working three years ago and we're going to let them come in with a lateral transfer? Is that what I read?
There, there was a change in that. And I don't know if, I don't have all the details right off the top of my head. Do you mind if I look at that real professional?
I just, I thought that was a long time. If somebody had been out of work, you guys are licensed and certified. And I would think your license would have been expired had you not been working in the last three years and wondered why we would offer a lateral transfer at that long a period of time.
I mean, they still would have to have valid certifications, which means that they would have been maintaining their CDs.
Yeah.
Would be one thing. And our, in Ohio, the firefighter and EMT cycles are three years. So as long as they land within that period, they would be able to recert. So I believe that the three-year wasn't a huge concern because of that.
Okay.
And they still have to go through already training as well. So I think that would cover them. For us to be able to tell whether or not their technique was still proper.
And then the second half of that sentence was, "or at the chief's discretion." So like, that kind of opened it up to just about anything if need be, one way or another. I just was curious as to why, number one, the timeframe was so long? And then why we granted so much authority to the chief's discretion, which I'm okay with. He's, he's got good discretion, but chiefs do change and, you know.
Well, we recognize that for recent hires, we had an individual that had been out of the fire service for a little bit. Was running, trying his own business and it didn't work out. Or it wasn't working out to where he wanted or he wanted to increase for whatever reason. And he turns out to be a great hire. He's a phenomenal employee. So when this employee like that kind of brought to light that there might be some flexibility there in certain situations. So I think that's why I was at it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I don't.
I don't.
I'll offer resolution 25061 to approve the change in the fire department hiring policy.
I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. The second resolution I bring to you is 25-062. This is actually kind of more of a township resolution, but I should take point on this project. This is an MOU with the Lucas County Emergency Management Agency for the use of Everbridge Mass Notification Software. This is a software program that's been, this is the lens alerting system that we currently use. That we can send out road code, the EMA sends out weather alerts. We actually even use it for internal use in the department for going open shifts. This is an updated type of software for this. And our department once again has found a way to modify it to use internally as well. And the EMA is actually using that to show other departments how it can be used so that they can get more departments to sign onto this. It's a one-price program that gets split among all the jurisdictions that sign in. The current cost for this would be $3,200 for the township. Not sure what the cost will be next year because this year the R-CO is covering $25,000 on this. But the EMA is confident that they'll have other departments signing on to bring that cost down. And if it, if it does change significantly for us, there is a 30-day opt-out for anyone that enters.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What did you say our cost? Just township cost?
$3,200. And it's actually, this is a software program, both done hits for every department. The road department can send out road information, closures, that type of thing. It goes out to directed areas, so you don't have to send out to the whole township. You can choose neighborhoods for water, what else, and that's it. It's a pretty useful program.
I'll offer resolution 25062 to enter a memorandum of understanding, Lucas County EMA. Second.
Hey, Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes. Thanks, Jeff. Hi, Oliver.
Hi. Good afternoon, trustees. The only resolution I have administrators category was 25-05. Resolution approving the proposal from Bureau Group for Professional Services. This is for the ongoing project, the Silicon Road. The department of Silicon, and as a bit of background, the township issued a request for qualifications for professional service design. In response to the RFQ, there were six responses. There is a selection committee which interviewed all six. And the recommendation and the group that had highest point of the process was Bureau Group. The proposal that's in front of the trustees tonight would provide approximately 3,900 hours of professional services for the broad scope throughout the life of the project. And broken down into different phases in the proposal. So it includes programming services, schematic design, design development, which also touches on preparation of any landscaping plans at the site. The development of construction documents, so the preparation of working drawings, investigations, and a team required approvals. Support with the bidding phase, support during the construction phase, including contract administration, and the reporting of progress to the trustees throughout the process. The closeout phase is the unfollowed phase. The total cost that's proposed is not to exceed $525,000. Brockman did consult with Lucas County engineers and ODOC to verify that the cost was reasonable. They just go for the project. And we do have ten here to review this after many anterior technical issues that Rob or I would not be willing to. Currently there is an allocation of approximately $600,000 that we estimated for this during the last budget development cycle. I believe that the last time we built this project was about a month since I've heard of overall.
Guys, good? I'll offer resolution 25053 to approve a proposal to the Bureau Group for Professional Services.
A second.
Hey, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oliver. What we got here, Emmeron? Want to mop that and stuff going here?
This is the end of the Florida February. Basically, the only thing significant at this early stage is, is the revenue. And we did receive some significant amount of taxes, increase in taxes, especially in the road fund for $331,000 increase and then in general fund, some $100,000 increase because that's the inside village. So, and expenditures is to review or conclude really anything at this stage.
Sure. Got a resolution, a couple of resolutions for us too, please?
25-06. Here we need some additional appropriation in respect to the OBWC grants because Lucas County gives us that estimate, but really basically we don't know the exact amount that we picked. So that's why some of these increases are bigger. We need to have some additional appropriation for OBWC of the share and not OBWC project. It's something, it's something, there's some danger that we are going to create.
Any questions? I'll offer resolution 25056, the Township appropriation from a covered balance. Second.
Hey, Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
We have to approve a, a non-certification because we had to pay some money to the OBR because there was some change in the rate. And it's some kind of an adjustment for that. So that's why, I mean, we had to comment it.
Questions? I'll offer a resolution 25057, then now payment.
I'll second.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Here the, here the money has been transferred from the escrow fund to the police fund. Because according to our requirements that any in the police department, if they don't work till then three years, basically we deduct $20 per month. And if they don't complete three months, we have to, the three years, we have to give the money back to the police funds. Because we have to send them to the on-site, the proceedings and things like that. So that's why I mean, we have, according to the policies, we have to do this. So basically, you didn't complete it just three years.
I'll offer resolution 25058, transfer of funds. Second.
Hey, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnline?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes. Alrighty. Julia, thanks again for coming. Come on up.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, just for the record, your name, address, please.
My name is Julia West. My address is 9234, Pennsylvania. I live in the road site subdivision, which is on the west side of the Shaw Road, looking to Brent, Pennsylvania. And I ask for your help. I know that you, when talking about streetlights, I know you're not responsible for putting in streetlights very often. You would have to be licensed, right, people to help us somewhat. In our subdivision, we have 13 streetlights that are out and been out for quite some time.
Wow.
We had multiple requests with First Energy. Some streetlights have been requested three or four times to be repaired and they're not getting repaired. One light has been out as long as a year and one light pole has been laying in the grass for several weeks. And when we put in requests to the First Energy, which acquired Toledo Edison, we get actually lies from them. We, we, in one instance, I think it was told it wasn't, it wasn't our pole. First Energy said it's not our pole. So it's not like some other industry. Somebody steps in and puts a pole in and it clearly isn't our pole. In one instance, and they were contacted the PUCO. And then the First Energy told the PUCO that they had already fixed it when they had not. Oftentimes, they'll say it will be out in two days, but they're not out at all. I called, I mean, the third request, the pole that's near my yard. And I asked them to escalate it because it was the third request. And I was told that supervisor would call me the next day and they never called. So, so we now, I have a spreadsheet of the 13 locations of the lights. And I'm aware that in the Monclova area, neighbors, residents in the neighborhood went to Channel 13 News that in February. And only then did they get their lights fixed. And then next month in March, some people in Holland, who live in a neighborhood, also found the need to go to Channel 13 News because they weren't getting the same kind of light that we're getting. And only when they went to Channel 13 News did trucks come out and fix the streetlights. Some of those people waiting as long as a year also, and then the multiple requests had to be had. So what, I know that this group, the trustees, are part of the process for C515.11 or C515.08 in the tax assessment of our properties. And so I'm hoping that you can help us. Toledo Edison, First Energy are clearly breaching the contract because they're supposed to be maintaining the streetlights and they're not. And I have talked to the PUCO this morning and asked them to please require the First Energy to fix these lights. I was told that they should be fixed within 10 business days. And so I will wait the 10 business days, which ends up being April 15. However, by April 15, if the lights aren't fixed, I'm going to go to Channel 13 News, like the other neighborhoods have had to do. And so this brings me to why I'm here. And that is because our neighborhood doesn't want to have to go to Channel 13 News every time a light won't change. It's kind of ridiculous. My understanding, and what I need you to do is correct me here, is that someone from Lucas County contracts with First Energy. However, it's my understanding that the PUCO designates districts and Lucas County is in a district where they only can contract with First Energy. And that's not, and that's where you, please correct me if that's not right.
That's a great question because I don't know. Do you guys know?
We found the map on the PUCO website showing districts and it was a rather large district in Lucas County, in the west of Lucas County, that said it was First Energy's district. So what we need in the future is to have somebody other than First Energy being, you know, our provider. As I believe, Monclova and Holland and some other neighborhoods probably have the same need as we do. And I don't know how to accomplish that, whether it's somebody from the PUCO that we need to be working with, somebody from like it's somebody from the PUCO that we need to be working with, somebody from the county that we need to be working with, or is it the governor's office who appoints the PUCO warden? Because this is, this isn't working for any of us.
No. Hey, shifting gears, just hold, Julie. Hey, Emran, don't we hold mon, don't we, aren't we a funnel for money for Toledo Edison for those streetlights? Isn't that a pass-through? Why couldn't we just hold their money until they fix our lights?
It seems like no one is holding them to the time.
No, that's where I'm going with that, Julie. Oliver, can't we just hold their money? Tell them we're not, they're not getting any more money until they fix the lights?
Yeah, we could certainly check them. So that's a check with our legal.
Yeah, I think that's a pass-through for, that we, yeah, we might be able to do something there.
Okay.
Get their attention anyways.
That would be helpful, yes.
And then, if you don't mind, Julie, hey, Oliver, could we reach out that, can we, what can we do to help? This isn't the only neighborhood we've noticed some of these issues at.
Right. We can certainly, so there is a new external regional affairs manager to be taken over at Edison. We can certainly reach out. And we started asking that this be accelerated. We've asked for a couple of other areas to be accelerated, but certainly follow as soon as possible with the input we've received.
And then do we mind, Julie? We didn't get your phone number, but if we could get that before you leave tonight, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. I'm sorry, because that's a great neighborhood, and you shouldn't have to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Andrew. We'll look at these things, everything.
Yeah. We'll keep our fingers crossed. We'll give the, give the old college try, that's for sure. Is there anything from the board that, anything to discuss from the board? At this juncture, I'd like to adjourn at 5:31. Second.
Hey, Mr. Genon.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
This is Johnson.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thanks, everybody.